Let's call this meeting to order and we'll begin with the pledge of flagrant.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the meeting of May 13, 2013. With that, Will call.
Clear.
Here.
Aaron, here.
Here.
Here. Here. In your back, you have minutes of the April 22 public hearing and the regular reporting. Any additions or corrections? Motion to know what is approved.
No.
Second one. Any questions, comments? None, Will call.
Clear.
Yes.
Aaron.
Yes.
Demansky.
Yes.
Holman.
Yes.
Okay, clerk's report.
Total tax income since the last board meeting, $112,151.14. Attached to clerk's report is a copy of the detailed election results for the April night election for your information. And I have a letter here to read aloud from the city of Dallas City. To Mr. Paul Moment. Dear Paul, on behalf of the city of Dallas City, we would like to congratulate you on your retirement as president of the Village of Beecher. Our community is well aware that through your leadership, the Village of Beecher pulled together to assist us during the flood of 2008. The generous financial assistance will never be forgotten by this council or by our entire community. We know that the overwhelming generosity shown by the Village of Beecher requires many, many helping hands and the willingness of the community to work together. We also know that it requires great leadership and we thank you for that. We wish you well in your retirement from civic duty, but we also know that you are the type of person that will stay active in your community. Dallas City could not have asked for a best or better sister city. Thank you for your leadership and the part you played in helping our community. Again, we wish you a great retirement. Always know that you, as well as all of Beecher, are welcome in our community. Hopefully our paths will cross again. Thanks, Paul, and enjoy. Signed, Blue President, Mayor of Dallas City, along with the council members of Dallas City.
Well, a lot of people know this, but we had a fundraiser in 2008 for flood relief, and the community came together and supported this thing immensely. And I think we turned over $28,000 to Dallas City. That was done within four weeks, four weeks' time, and it's only because of the people of Beecher that did it. Their hearts run out and I'm just glad to be a part of it. And like I said, the people of Beecher, so appreciate that. Okay, recognition of audience. We have this evening, we have our state rep, LG Sims, here. He held office hours, I believe it was, what, the 25th?
Yep.
And I was unfortunate, I was in Missouri at that time, I'm sorry I couldn't be there, but with that, you have the floor.
Absolute night, Mr. President. We had some wonderful visitors come by. It was a great time, they asked really great questions. Had the opportunity to talk about some of the issues going on in Springfield and offer assistance to the officials here in Beecher. You know, I couldn't let today go by and not come here and say thank you for all that you've meant for Beecher. You know, your 28 years of service, you know, the village doubled in size, but also doubled in service that's provided to it. So, Mr. President, you know, you're to be commended. And to do that, I'd like to present you and read something for you. State of Illinois House Representative, 98 General Assembly, House Resolution Number 284 on Representative of Sims. Whereas Paul Moment accepted the offer of becoming Beecher Village trustee and chair of the sewer and water community in 1985 in order to fix Beecher's water problem. And whereas Paul Moment served as Beecher Village trustee and chair of the sewer and water community in 1985, 1997. And whereas during this time, Paul Moment oversaw such projects as well number three drilling in 1988, well number four drilling in 1995, and two wastewater treatment plant regulations in 1989 and 1996. Whereas new miles of water main will replace where Paul Moment's tenure included mains on Orchard, Meadow, Country, Oak Park, Dunbar, Elliott, Miller, Hodges, Dixie, and Elm Streets. And whereas Paul Moment was elected Beecher Village president in 1997 and served in his position until May 13, 2013. And whereas during Paul Moment's time as first president, the Village of Beecher grew from 2,024 residents to 4,359 residents. And the village's annual budget increased from 1.5 million to 5.5 million. And whereas during Paul Moment's tenure, there were four police chiefs, five public work superintendents, 672 of those board meetings, and 28 lunes in office. And whereas Paul Moment, a lot of work there, Mr. President. Whereas Paul Moment has decided it's time to retire from elective office. Therefore, being resolved by the House of Representatives of the 98 General Assembly of the State of Illinois, that we recognize Paul Moment for his 28 years of service of the Village of Beecher and congratulate him on his retirement. And being further resolved, a super copy of this resolution be presented to Paul each one. Paul Moment is a symbol of our esteem and respect. Adopted by the House of Representatives, April 30, 2013, Timothy D. Maines, Club of the House, Michael J. Manning, Speaker of the House.
Done?
You picture by the flag, right?
Big dam off that.
That would help.
I'm sorry, I fixed that.
One, I said.
Give me one, please.
Technology.
Technology.
Hold that up there.
There you go.
Anyone wish to address the board? So state your name, address, concern. If none, we'll continue on with our reports of commissions. Unification commission did meet last, last Thursday evening. Planting will be taking place within the next two weeks. Vastus also will be coming. And hopefully we can make Beecher look good again. Hopefully, going to help, so everybody's going to be assigned to different areas to do the plantings and it will proceed second, 22nd. So that's it, unification, Fourth of July.
The 2013 Chevy Camaro is out about town and the activity is ready for sale. The brochure trustee Coleman has.
Yes, sir.
Anyone who's buying.
Catch a text.
So the brochures coming out around the June 7th about the activities during Fourth of July. That was the first one.
Ailer's Commission?
Ailer's Commission, this is our last report on the agenda. Ailer's Commission was decommissioned last week, or I should say, the week before. And we were all sitting around the table and, you know, I asked, how long has it been since we started this project? And somebody said, four years. And it was like unbelievable, you know, that four years flew by and that we accomplished so much in those four years with that Veterans Memorial. So I want to thank everyone on the committee and everyone that worked for that and everyone that put their effort toward it. We do have money left over and we're still raising money through brick sales and different things like that, but we have a strong budget moving forward, but the committee is no longer going to do it. We're going to do it through the voters for under my committee. So that's where it's going to take place.
It's going to take about six hundred bucks a year to keep the tax up. So there are continuing costs.
Right. And again, I think we also talk, I don't know how we can encourage people that want to buy bricks that we can advertise during the Fourth of July celebration or the AMDA dinner or something like that, that we have to let people know that bricks can be purchased at the Village Hall again. So this is ongoing and there's some problems in the bricks that will help towards maintenance and.
Right. Yeah, the brick sales work for the perpetual care, you know, of the memorial. And that's one thing, we still have a bunch of bricks left, you know, to engrave. So if anybody has any or knows of any veterans or wants to buy any, let us know. Order forms are.
And it don't just have to be a veteran, you can do it memory of anybody. We have one part for veterans, one part for anybody that would so desire to buy a memorial for it. So it's not just veterans, it can be anybody.
So that ends my report on the Ailer's Commission.
Youth Commission?
Youth Commission, we have a talent show coming up on June 1st. On June 22nd, we're going to be doing an amazing race. Kind of a takeoff of the TV show, prove spots in Beecher. And then we have two water park trips planned for July.
Okay, with that, Cancer Memorial, just established.
Cancer Memorial, we had a meeting last, last week, last Thursday, and it came to my attention that we need to change the name of the Cancer Commission. And what we want to do is change the name to Cancer Awareness Commission. It is not a memorial, it is something that, there's a lot of survivors, you know, so that's what, what the committee wanted to do. The commission wanted to rename it. So we're going to give it back to Tim, he's going to redo the ordinance and next meeting will, I don't know if I'm saying it right, readon the ordinance under the new name. So that's kind of where we're at. We also have bricks for sale and that's another big fundraiser. I know that bricks, cancer awareness is different than, than the veterans, but it seems like with the cancer awareness garden, you know, it's, it's one of those things where it hits, it hits every family, you know? So we're hoping that people come out, they buy bricks and help us with that. Our, our total so far, we're at $3,150 in the account and we're looking at a total project cost of around $75,000. So we, we have a long way to go. We're looking for corporate sponsors, we're looking for individuals that want to sponsor. And another thing that we're looking for are volunteers to help with the work. You know, there's, there's only so much that a commission can do, but there's a lot that a large group can do as far as getting the word out. We're planning on having a float at the Fourth of July, just to keep people aware of what's going on. We just put up a sign, the future site up, so we had a photo shoot there last week. So there's a lot of things happening with the Cancer Awareness Garden. We're, we're looking at breaking ground at Tractor for a Cure in July, so it's when we're going to break ground. But as you can see with the Veterans Memorial, it took us four years and this is a process and we're in that stage. And right now, we're in that stage of breaking money and making sure that we get to the end result. One thing that I wanted to ask Buddy too, is maybe to do, see if we can get electric to the site. And we're going to do some earth, some ground movement over there too, so we're going to go with that. And that's basically it. That's my report.
Okay, that's it with the commission. We'll go to our committees on finance administration.
Okay, I'm going to just give you the pressure that you can take from the first page. For the field count, John Field, which we've delivered more than we'd like to see, the work for payments, also the spraying field, you said you'd use it higher other times of the year. The next count, the debt, we did have an $80,000 loan payment, other than the one that was running behind. And as to general advice, if they were on the board, it was true to the intent, they were saying that.
Any questions about those accounts?
The mission accounts, Fourth of July, you can see the sponsor money beginning to come in compared to last month, we're up about $1,400. On the Police Department Drug Enforcement accounts, there was a truck camera that was purchased out of that. Income from the youth commission is up from the president of the parents' night out. The Ailer's, you might note that's the ballots that's going to be turned over to the village, so a little over $12,000 that's left in the Ailer's account. And this week, no, last week, there was a brick deposit that's not in here, so the trustee we indicated, bricks are continuing to be purchased, but that's a pretty decent amount to charge to the village to maintain now. And it's my understanding they want to keep that as a separate account for the, for the newsletter, shows or answers. I did include this page again, one more time, because there was a village permit, or a tap-in fee rather, in the month of April. So we equaled at last year's, we had two, two tap-in amounts and we had a second one. Then you have the list of actual commission, the special account bills.
Any questions about that?
I make a motion approving the treasurer's report for the prior month.
Second? Any discussion or question? None, Will call.
Waylon?
Yes?
Holman?
Yes.
Demansky? Aaron? Yes, Larry?
Yes. Also in front of us are the bills for the month of April. The updates are what's involved, they were also provided us in email. Any questions on those? The, I make a motion to approve the bills for the month of April in a total of $140,966.45.
Second? Any discussion or questions on the vote? None, Will call.
Clear.
Yes.
Aaron? Yes. Demansky?
Yes.
Yes.
Waylon? Yes.
The next item on our list is concerning the payoff of the 2006 MFT loan. Nelson, do you have any information on that?
We're set for the closing tomorrow morning at 9:30.
Long loan, Nelson.
Yeah.
Why did I want the MFT payout?
The MFT, we paid that off, they came from two different amounts, it wasn't quite in the, in the. We took $95,000 from the MFT and $77,646 from the infrastructure account. We paid that off and it's, it's done.
Any requests or comments? Is that one more loan that you got? Thanks, Nelson. The next item on our agenda is concerning the ordinance authorizing the clerk, the clerk president and treasurer to sign off financing the loan for the 2002 water tank and booster station loan. We talked about this, the last board meeting and the refinance rate is a lot lower than what we're paying right now. The new rate would be 2.5% as opposed to the 5.25% we're paying currently. So I make a motion authorizing the.
Breakfast.
You did your ordinance, 1187.
1187.
And it's an ordinance authorizing the borrowing of $700,000 in execution of that certificate to the First National Bank.
Motion fumbled? Okay. Second? Any questions?
Just wanted to make a note, we did this last meeting, we had it done, concerning to the board, we're going to do my ordinance and make a motion. And you need to make your speech.
Any other discussion? None, Will call.
Waylon?
Yes.
Holman?
Yes.
Demansky?
abstaining, just a nice flight explanation, my wife was employed by the First National Bank in Grand Park.
Aaron?
Yes. Clear.
Yes. Nice report.
About safety.
Police Department mostly report is enclosed for your review. Update on school safety and security measures, Chief, you want to bring us up to?
All right, the equipment that we were, that we had ordered for our rapid deployment, we acquired that equipment, that has been paid for out of this whole, that was our plan to begin with and to complete that. We are in probably I call tier two of our school security assessment. We're assessing the security at each school. And that's just a high school, the junior high, and the elementary at this time. Once that is completed, they're going to have a tickle top exercise with the school, the NMA, and discuss the results of that security assessment. So we are moving forward.
Any questions of the chief on this hour? Did not that completion report.
That streets alley?
The, all the resurfacing that's been done. Today, we went around and did a punch list, very check-ins for restoration of the stone or the grass in the front lawns. And if anybody has to go over Parnell Creek, it makes the difference that it is driving over that bridge for the work that we've done. All in all, I think we're happy with the work, with the next couple weeks, other restoration should be done. Finance reporting, what I'd like to do is eventually is make one more attempt to sit down with the church, church road and homeowners, see if we can acquire some land again, enter the property somehow or in some way. I think it would benefit them as well. I have two pictures during that last rainstorm that we had. I wasn't back out there in the rain, I did not melt. I was out there in the rain, I took a couple pictures of hot neat water in the farm fields that were draining into the backyards. And if we were able to put this swale in or whatever it is behind Pine Street, I think it would help that property as well. So eventually, I'll go ask the shepherd, pat neck them and sit down with them. The work that we did do for the swale, for the natural flow of water in the farm fields, from what we've been told and what we've seen is in fact working. It's hard to believe when you go out there, it's an optical illusion because it looks like it's up and it's not, it's actually flowing down to. So, so far, that seems to be working. Fourth of July banners and flags, that's going to be, we think, the 20th. Street sweeping has been completed, there was a lot of dust falling around town during that night. To reterminally, we didn't finish 2012 and the list was included in our packet that will be tweaked this year. Probably add a few more. Do you have any questions?
None? Water?
Water and sewer department reports are closed.
Do you have a question on that? Buddy, are you looking at the usage of each one of the chemicals we put in?
Yes, I am.
Because we've, we're putting out, we're using more in well five than in the well.
Well, that's because you have to balance out your chemicals to carry residuals throughout your system. So I will not always add the same amount of chemical at well three or the booster station or at well four, because they're different chemicals are designed to do different things. Okay? And that's the reason why you'll never see them balanced.
Because I'm noticing there's a huge amount of chlorine going in at well five.
Yeah, and look at the distance that well five has to cover. You got an Antucket Cove and it's all plastic pipe, all the Hunter's Chased West and a lot of MGM. In order to retain a minimum of a 0.5 chlorine residual, you have to add more chlorine at that, at those points, so it doesn't dissipate.
Okay. Water billing register for the months of March and April closed for review. And I'm sure we all see the pump to build ratio. Hopefully, with the leak detection we did, hopefully we may see some improvement there. Some, which is, next one here. Who goes in, Maxwell Street water main update. Restoration work is done now. We'll be a final walk through tomorrow.
And it needs some touch-up.
Yes, exactly. So, and we'll walk it tomorrow. 1:30.
I'm aware of that, yeah.
Okay. Leak detection project, what do you want to give us an update on how that went?
You're going to get a final report on your leak detection. There were seven areas, four of them were hydrants, one of them was off of Maxwell Street area that was leaking. Mathematically, it figures out to be maybe, or just less than a million gallons right now a month. So, you know, we will take care of those. I'm not, you know, as far as your, your, your water loss, I want you to be aware in this billing period, like we discussed, you know, you realize you did replace a water main, you had a couple water main breaks, you had hydrant flushing of the main and charging of the main. So that was definitely a reflection on your build to pumped ratio.
That's a question, yeah. Buddy, where are these leaks at? And where do you think the water is going? Is it going into the sanitary?
Yeah, I don't know about the sanitary. I can tell you this, up on Church Road, the hydrants leaking in Beatty Lumber, where it's all chained up. Over on Maxwell Street, like I said, where they put the, the new water main, we know there's a rock, that they got to blow that out and that's leaking, or had been leaking. Let me see, up at the nursing home, one of their hydrants was also leaking on a private side, you know, we got to go in there and, I have the isolation valve shut on these, you know, and they're aware of it. As far as leak areas are concerned, one of the, the worst one, which is probably leaking an estimated 10 gallons per minute, is right in the wheel well on Indiana Avenue and Catalpa Street, right off the corner. So it's buried deep, it's not even going to show up. I would venture to say, because of how close it is to the storm, you know, that they put in, that it's probably going directly in and out. But on the same token also, the sanitary line is there. So you can figure 10 gallons per minute if it is, because it is vitrified clay.
I'm just curious, we got high, high flow rates at the sewer. None, I haven't set these.
No, darn. Please. And that, that, I just did a little quick math. If you're talking a million gallons, that is the difference of about four and a half percent, almost five percent.
Yeah.
So it wouldn't make a decent difference now.
Well, it's going to drop it down. I mean, you're looking at 60-some percent. I mean, if you're at, if you're at 80.
You got 62, you go to 67 plus the other factors, the fire and stuff like that.
Right, like I said, you had a fire and the night that, and God only know, you know, because we kept track of it, the administrator, myself, was here the whole night. I want to say they used probably about $160,000 easily, you know, of water. So, you know, that just gives you an idea on how much they can take. And like I said, the water main, you know, putting it online, flushing it, charging it, flushing it, and we had a couple water main breaks also, all of it adds up.
These hydrants, what, do we have to pack them?
Well, I don't know how you, why, you know, the one on Maxwell Street, Bob, that's just a matter of them, they're, we'll discuss that one tomorrow. But the one on Beatty Lumber, I mean, that's back in the backwards, all chained up, we can't even get in there. And the other one up at the nursing home, that's in their new part, and I just have to meet with their maintenance guy and have him, you know, blow it out or do whatever they're going to need to do on it, because it's not ours. But they're only, according to them, they're only leaking maybe two gallons per minute, maybe one gallon. So.
Val turning by Simpson in the amount of $13,500 will also be going as budgeted and will be coordinated with hydrant flushing. Val turning by Simpson, the amount of thirteen thousand five hundred will also be being budgeted and will be coordinated with hydrant flushing. Since Val turn could stir off some of the mains. You gotta start date on that.
Uh, it's not gonna be for probably at least another two weeks.
That could move the report.
Okay. Are we building the property?
Okay, we need, we need to consider proposal to crack seal and seal coat fireman's walking, fireman's park walking path from suburban asphalt in the amount of three thousand four hundred thirty-five dollars. This work came in over budget, but it looks like Buddy's able to come up with the difference.
If you say so.
All right. So I'd like to make a, a motion to accept the, the bid for crack sealing and seal coat fireman's park walking path in the amount of thirty-four hundred thirty-five dollars.
Second. Motion in the second. Any discussion or question? If none, roll call.
Larry?
Yes.
Aaron? Yes.
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 Yes. Status of the park benches, did we get them delivered yet?
They're, they're delivered, I just need to meet up with you and figure out a, a couple things. Also, I have to remove that one station, and it's not gonna be as easy, so, the sooner the better.
I wanna talk to you about that too, because I think we could do a multiple use on that. I think we figured it out.
Yes, you could.
Okay? All right. Address and name signage for parks and update? Do you have any signs?
Oh.
We're ready to order.
Ready to order, okay.
All right.
Yeah. Yeah, I didn't see that coming.
Yeah. All right, Chief, what about the sound problems here in the township meeting hall?
Well, this room is not acoustically friendly. Every time the air handler turns on, it kinda drowns out what, the volume. The microphones that you got hanging in front of you are, are, are kinda like what they, they call them choir microphones, because they're designed to pick up just the, the sound around each microphone. What I did at last board meeting is we're going off of this right here, this is the microphone, we're not doing the external mic, because that was a condenser mic, and if you didn't talk, like, directly towards the mic, I'm getting feedback on that thing, so I'm gonna get away. If you didn't talk directly into the mic, you couldn't hear, the closer you got to it, the better it was. The last board meeting, I listened to it, the sound was better, it was a lot better. The other thing I'm looking at is just tapping into the sound system itself, instead of running off this microphone. But then, anybody that would speak from the audience, we have to set up a podium and set up a wireless mic. Because if you don't speak into a microphone, you're not gonna hear anything. This way, the way it's working right now, it picks up the audience, it can pick up everything. Now, there was, I think, the township is working on a proposal to get new microphones. But those microphones, you gotta be about seven inches away from them. So you gotta talk directly into them, and again, we need one for the audience. Should talk about maybe nine, ten microphones.
Get a new mixer.
Yeah, because there's not enough ports on.
Oh. I know there were two proposals, one for a wired mic, and then the other was wireless microphone.
Right. And with the wireless, now you got batteries for each one. And I think it's possible.
I'd like to stay with what we have this evening.
See what we have right now, I, I haven't heard any negative feedback. I mean, you still have to turn it up, but it's a lot better. When you were standing on top of this microphone, the sound was really good. But then again, it was a wireless, it was interference, if there's laptops or cell phones, that could interfere, and you would hear like a buzzing sound. You know, right now, we're just working off of that, but when the air handlers, if you shut them off, the sound would be a lot better. But we need a sort of reason here. And that's not a good thing.
Right. Okay. Well, we'll make sure that our people watching this at home.
Just give us feedback on it, like I said, I can look into, I've tried every way, it seems this is about probably the best.
Okay. All right, thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
University of Illinois at Chicago, MPA students, released the municipal service plan for the village feature, and the report is enclosed for your review. And that ends my report.
No questions, go to planning, building and zoning.
Bonding agreement, according issue, there's been a problem with recording the boundary agreement with the county. Since the legal description requires our bonded lines, no such legal has can be easily written. State attorney has been asked for an opinion on this matter, and we are waiting in response. They are hoping to use the school boundaries, however, which could be the county line, would be sufficient. The county cannot use this roadway for the boundary since they fear that there is a future roadway to be relocated. Since Crawford Avenue is a school district boundary for the village, as formally requested, that the school district line be used. However, the county cannot find a legal description for the school district boundary line. And we're finding it is hard. I hear it echo. It's hard to believe that this type of thing has come forth, since no other boundary agreement has ever had any kind of criteria. We're still waiting if any, yes, sir.
Since the, since this agenda was posted, I'm just terribly frustrated with the recorder's office, and I gotta. But it's an issue to one division of that, the afternoon shift, I wasn't gonna say. I gotta dump, so I'm having to. So we don't need state's attorney's opinion anymore, I guess I could throw the recorded document out of there, but I got a recorded number. Piattone has a recorded number, and everything's happening. But that happened then, since I wrote this, because we were waiting for six weeks for an opinion as to how to record this document, and I knew it was important. So I talked to someone who's worked there a long time, this is how we do these own, record. They wanted legal descriptions, right? How do you write a description of a boundary?
The Attorney General got involved, and that was probably the problem. Or state's attorney.
We have that issue resolved, and you had something you wanted to get done before you left office.
Yeah, that's.
Do a, 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 we gotta come.
Thanks, Bob. Meeting of the Planning and Zoning Committee, scheduled for May the twenty third, has been canceled at this time until all the appointments are made and agenda is considered. Next task of the commission is to begin updating the land use plan to include the Eliana. Over the new administration, we'll have to decide how to proceed with the selection of a planner for this work. Ten thousand dollars has been budgeted for this work, and we will consider, still waiting on IDOT to decide if they are going to fund all or a portion of this work. We are also pursuing other options for funding, such as projects including grant funds.
And why would you, bringing due view for consideration of grant? Do you guys can decide whether or not you don't like it?
The Building Department code enforcement reports were closed for your review.
Under, uh, Rowan Village President's report, we did have meetings on the Eliana Expressway. Mayor Alex Samansky, Mr. Barber, myself did attend. Bob went to two of them, I did not make the second one. We talked about corridor planning, and maybe each individual community doing planning or working with the neighboring community, and, and try to put the plan together of what you want this Eliana corridor to look like. And what's the uses that you'd like to see coming into your areas, so. That was the first part of the meeting, and Bob, you went to the second one, Bob, you great both, you wanna report on the second meeting?
There were some questions raised about the interchange of national damage when I was in the fight. A question related by, I mean, mortuary. In the spirit of cooperation, I was going to try to get an ironing, but we're waiting till the dust settles. I was a little upset with the question that I don't know.
There was maybe, I felt, no questions were asked.
I thought the, uh, in other words, if, if Mayor Wolman was there, I think we would've heard more. We were able to keep our mouth shut all the time. You say I can't keep my mouth shut. I have to, that sort of rubbed me a little long.
Rather than that, it was something that we didn't know before. The good news is, Eliana is on, I mean, the bike gas is under radars. And the corridor council is going to three ninety-four Rockland, or council is going to do the bike test in this way, so we're moving forward.
And, and I did get an email today, as far as Eliana is concerned, as far as Indiana is concerned, on the road closures. I guess they have some consensus on it, what I read in the report anyhow, maybe it's not. I, I think that.
Depends how you define consensus.
Okay, well, but they thought they had consensus anyhow, so. Indiana has been a problem, let's say, as far as the routing and some of the roads that they're contemplating closing, so. That's about all that I've, I've got on the Eliana. South suburban airport update, I, I can tell you that they are still buying property. In fact, I spoke to somebody Saturday that is in the process of moving some equipment off of property that the airport just bought. So they are continuing to buy, how much I don't know, but they are still continuing to buy. Results of the office hours for state, uh, LG Sims, I was not there, but.
I think he had five or six guests come to visit, my whole, whole hours was filled up with guests, there wasn't any downtime, I don't know. And there were several occasions where we had to vacate the conference room so he could meet with constituents, so. I, I, I'm certain that they might try it again, but they'll do it at other locations, when they were, when these able to visit.
Donnie Trotter there also?
No, he was the old daddy.
Okay, okay. Because both of them were supposed to come, I guess, we're looking at, if they do. Okay, any other old business, anyone to like to discuss? While we turn the gavel over. I just have a few quick statements. I wanna thank Bob, Jeanette, Jeff, Buddy, for their cooperation and dedication in the past sixteen, twenty-eight years, whatever the case may be. Without you four people, believe you me, it's more than one person can handle, so. You, your four people are very important, so, and I hope that continues, and I hope the new administration realizes people makes the work, you know, so. Like I said, it's residents and, and you people, so, I appreciate it from the bottom of my heart, I really do, so. You can only make somebody look bad, or you can make them look good, and you've always made them look good, so I, I appreciate that. Also, I'd like to thank the citizens for the last sixteen years, and being your village president. And I appreciate their support and their understanding, and I really mean it. But I mostly wanna thank my wife and my family. They have been my support, uh, the twenty-eight years I've been in office, and without their support, I probably would've quit a long time ago. But they have been very supportive, and I appreciate it, so. Thank you very much. With that, I have nothing else, already to swear in the new village president.
And while we swear in the three new trustees for.
See, Bob? Take your cover off.
I raise my hand, your feet after me. I, state your name.
I, Samansky.
Having been elected to the office of trustee.
Having been elected to the office of trustee.
In the village feature.
In the village feature.
In the county of Will.
In the county of Will.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the position of trustee to the best of my ability.
Of the position of trustee to the best of my ability.
I, state your name.
I, Grace Samansky.
Having been elected to the office of village president.
Having been elected to the office of village president.
In the village feature.
In the village feature.
In the county of Will.
County of Will.
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of president.
Of the office of president. Yeah.
Yeah, this is real.
I gotta say, you ought to get, you guys stay here.
This tradition that we take a picture of a new board and old board, so we both just. How old were the same guys? What the heck? Don't worry, we got one for you.
That's covered off, Bob. All for Bob. Okay, now, on to your break, folks, we stop.
This is a resolution in recognition of Paul Wolman's service to the village feature. Whereas Paul Wolman accepted the offer of becoming the village trustee and chairman of the sewer and water committee in nineteen eighty-five in order to fix features and water problem. And whereas Paul Wolman served as a village trustee and chair of the sewer and water committee from nineteen eighty-five to nineteen ninety-seven. And whereas during this time, he oversaw such projects as the well number three drilling in nineteen eighty-eight, well number four drilling in nineteen ninety-five, and two wastewater treatment plant rehabilitation in nineteen eighty-nine and nineteen ninety-six. And whereas many miles of water mains were replaced during his tenure.
And whereas many miles of water mains were replaced during his tenure, including mains at Orchard, Meadow Country, Overpark, Dunkar, Elliott, Miller, Hodges, Dixie, and El. And whereas Paul Womack was elected village president in nineteen ninety-seven and served in his position until May thirteenth, twenty thirteen. And whereas during his time as village president, the village grew from two thousand and twenty-four residents to four thousand three hundred fifty-nine residents. And the village's annual budget increased from one point five billion to five point five million. And whereas during Paul Womack's tenure, there had been four police chiefs, five public works superintendents, six hundred seventy-two village board meetings, and twenty-eight pledges and audits. And whereas Paul Womack has now retired from elected office. Now therefore being resolved by the president board trustees of the village of feature, Will County, Illinois, that Paul Womack, formerly former village president and village trustee is hereby recognized for his twenty-eight years of service for the village of feature. Thank you.
If this could prove to you that the state plays your out. I was gonna say, it was my wildest dreams, thought they would play it right now.
I wouldn't, I didn't either. I wanna go cut it off.
They didn't have budgets for it. They got that passed in like four days, that's quick, Bill.
Because governor wasn't. I have one more thing, I have one more thing for you, just want to say. You have a lifetime welcome gift of a coffee in the morning. Please commit, because I hate sports and I sure as heck don't want to talk about it. You won the basketball game tonight. Please commit to village hall, you're welcome. Do I get a free water bill? Thank you, thank you.
For the record, Mr. President, there's only going to be a motion in second round.
There's a motion in there. So those are free water. Take care of you.
Thousand thirteen dash ten.
Motion made and second. I'm sorry. That's the way I used to do things. Why don't you do that?
Waylon?
Yes.
Old, up there.
Yes.
Yes.
Aaron's? Yes. Clary?
Yes.
Sorry, old man Spiker.
Okay. I put before you some appointments that I'd like to make this evening. And with some explanations that will link down below, I'd like to read them to you. I'd like to make the appointment of Mayor Protown Scott Wayling, who's the senior trustee, village administrator and zoning administrator in economic development, Bob Barber, village clerk Jeanette Connor, chief of police Jeff Weisberger, public works superintendent, let me rephrase that, crack public works superintendent.
Mass spirit.
Village prosecutor Tom Canute, village corporate council Tim Kuiper of the firm Austin and Kuiper. And then this is the one that's a little bit tricky. The treasurer will be Nelson Collins until June tenth, twenty thirteen. And the deputy treasurer effective June eleventh will be Kim Kowinski. I'm sorry, let me rephrase that. Nelson Collins until June tenth, then Nelson Collins becomes the deputy treasurer effective June eleventh. The new treasurer I would like to appoint would be Kim Kowinski, which is effective June tenth for the deputy treasurer and the treasurer effective June eleventh. We had to do it this way because of the closing of the loan tomorrow and the signature cards and so on and so forth. Kim has been working in the village hall three for the last month or so to try and get his feet wet to see if he would like to do it. To my knowledge, they haven't killed each other, right? And you haven't changed your mind?
No, sir, don't.
So I'm asking that we appoint him eventually as the treasurer, and like I said right now, we do the deputy treasurer. Therefore, I'd like to amend the motion. Some move?
Second.
Motion made by trustee Clary, second by trustee Aaron.
Clary?
Yes.
Aaron? Yes.
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Man, this is different. Also, I'd like to point out to you, the lay of science and chairman of all the commissions need to submit their appointments that they would like to, or appointments to the commissions. And also Nelson needs to know the person who's going to be the treasurer on each respective commission so that he can make the signature character. Any questions on that? I would like to complete all my appointments by June tenth. There is a trustee seat that is vacant. There's been a written opinion given to us, which is included in our packet. Because we may change the July meeting, the appointment has to be made by the June meeting. Otherwise, that won't meet in sixty days, that's correct. So since we're moving, I'll try and have, I have to have the trustee vacancy filled by any particular date. My first phone calls I received is the liquor license request from Sal Vamos, who is the Elk and Swallow Ranch. He's asking for five one-day events at a fee of two hundred and fifty dollars each. Our ordinance does not allow for that. So therefore, we're asking to amend that ordinance tonight. If you recall, he lost his liquor license last year, not so much by, at our actions done by us, but by the state. The state pulled his liquor license, he had some issues which he had to take care of. He believes he has taken care of. We've also given him some stipulations, which there is a letter disclosed in your packet after we met the deputy for a day, on what he has to do before we will issue the liquor license. Therefore, I'd like to entertain the motion to approve the liquor license. Eleven eighty-eight. Motion made by trustee second.
Waylon?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Up there? Yes.
Yes. Keep waiting for my name to get called. Way I'm tired.
Okay. The Will County governmental week, Bob and I and the mayor of Piattone and his village manager go down to there. We met with several representatives, including Tom Cross, Catherine Fulman. We represented them on the west side of, what's that, I don't know, west of the tracks. And then there was another individual, which I don't understand, who was the gentleman for the governor.
Jerry Hammond.
Who was the second to the governor. Some of the things that we discussed out there was basically Senate Bill sixteen eighty, which they're trying to give rights to a current police officer to run for office in his own municipality. So in other words, a trolling in the feature police department can run for mayor, become mayor, and then be the boss over his police chief. We basically voiced our opposition to that. There's House Bill nine sixty-one, which had to do with direct closet of Reverend Sherry. And Senate Bill sixteen eighty-one, which there is a move to try and block or hinder deconsolidation of other fire departments or fire districts, which so many municipalities are trying to do for budget reasons or whatever the case may be. We also discussed with the representatives for that. Any questions on that one? We're considering motion canceling the rubber road board meetings on May twenty-seventh, June twenty-fourth, July twenty-second, August twenty-sixth. Second. The motion made and second.
Clary?
Yes.
Aaron? Yes.
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
And as the packet indicated, our July eighth meeting is right after the Fourth of July, which staff is going to be working very hard during the Fourth of July celebration. Therefore, we're asking to do the July eighth meeting to July fifteenth. Is there a motion for that? Some move?
Second.
Motion made and seconded.
Just one point, Mr. President, that's Chamber Night also.
Waylon?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Up there? Yes. Clary?
Yes.
One of the things that came up in the recent Fourth of July meeting was the lights in Fireman's Park, which we keep hearing on a daily basis. That, and that was a report, we had a discussion and we decided to try and do something with those lights and basically get it off our radar. In fact, after that meeting, we had a one thousand dollar donation to repair the lights or replace the lights in Fireman's Park. Basically, from the discussion that we had there, I would be asking trustee Waylon if he would be interested in chairing a committee, a commission, some of the things that we had to work out so that over the Fourth of July, we would ask for donations like we had for the Dallas city, where we had the jugs throughout the park. And basically have a campaign called Light the Park where individuals or anyone can donate to that particular goal. And eventually, we would be able to repay, replace the lights in Fireman's Park. The goal would be somewhere between seventy-five thousand to one hundred thousand dollars. We had a meeting already with one of the lighting companies. So I hope that we would be able to proceed with that, if you're willing to take that.
Sure.
You know, go from there. And we haven't worked out a lot of the details, whether or not we're going to send out our proven agents or anything like that. But basically, we've heard about these lights for a long time and basically I think it's time that we try and do something, get ready for the village, come up with the funds or the Fourth of July commission to come up with the funds. I think we're gonna be waiting a long time, so I think we're gonna try and see if we can get done, get it off our plate. Last but not least. Now that we've all been sworn in, I'd like to make the following comment or statement. And I think I can make it on behalf of the entire village board and staff. During the past six years, I've had the pleasure of working with the village board and staff, Dave, which we have worked very hard to be fiscally responsible. We have worked towards a balanced budget without reduction in village services. A balanced budget in our financial situation has created an A-plus credit rating, which at this day and time is sort of unheard of, especially for a municipality which we all are struggling. We have all worked to repair streets, water mains, sidewalks, and other valuable infrastructure, and we will continue to do so in the future. We'll improve communications and working relationships with other governmental bodies, groups, associations, local businesses, and most of all, the residents of feature. And we will do so by listening to your suggestions, your comments, even your complaints and even your criticism. Because sometimes when we make a mistake, we learn by mistakes and we do better in the future. So we look forward to those comments and suggestions. Recently, I've had the pleasure of watching a video and listening to some of the activity that my predecessor, Mayor Paul Womack, has done with his current forge in the past. They have accomplished a lot. When I watched this video, I literally stood back in the back room with my mouth open saying, "Man, is he gonna be a hard actor, Bob." And I can stress that even more. I keep saying it, saying it, and saying it. As I last, Paul trolling, Paul Womack, I'm sorry, two words. Paul Womack, truly, you have a proud past. And with your help and with the help of the dozen village of feature and its residents, its staff, the village board, we will continue to have a promising future. I thank all of you for being here tonight and hope to see you in the future. Is there anything else? American motion to adjourn.
Some move?
This motion made and seconded. All go.
Clary?
Yes. Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Can't you say my name for one last time?
It's been, it's been all over here. It's here, it's here, isn't it?